...religions, faith, United States of America, and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, liberty, justice, or honor.
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you, first of all, that you are blessing us in our daily lives. Lord, we're asking you tonight to please bless Martin County schools and all those who work in the schools and for the schools. Lord, help the Board of Education to listen intently, ask questions as needed, to help us guide Martin County schools. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right. The first thing I need is approve the agenda, but there is a change to that. We are moving the closed session to the end of meeting instead of the one that's called the agenda for... Thank you. Second? I moved then seconded to approve the agenda with the moving of the closed session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. Public comments?
No comments.
No comments, no. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Barbara, I believe you had a question?
Yes, this is to Dr. Daley. Do we have a fundraising request, a limit for each school for fundraisers?
I believe the policy limits the number of the first and second semesters for certain activities.
For second?
I do not remember which one they are, what the limit is. You have a question that I want to read to the panel?
So, speaking with one of the principal, the new principal, they indicated that there was a limit on fundraising or not. I told him I wasn't aware of that, so there he is.
If I'm not mistaken, the policy has a limit for the ones during first and second semesters. But I honestly, I did not get back into the yesterday and I don't remember what that limit is.
Okay.
I can go back to you later with that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Second, approve of consent agenda.
Is her second? Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. Recomendations, Dr. Daley?
First group that I'd like to recognize actually is the Martin County Board of Education. Boards of Education, if I remember correctly, are the only elected body in the state that actually required by law, and they go training every year to maintain their positions and keep up with the things that are current. And I think it's appropriate that our board has been recognized by the North Carolina School Board Association as one of the boards across North Carolina where every member participated in that requirement for this past year. And I think it's a testament to your willingness to keep continuing your own education as you encourage our students to continue theirs. I'd like to present this to Mr. Heath on behalf of the North Carolina School Board Association, Administration of Martin County Schools. The next people I'd like to recognize actually are two of our administrators. We have a lot of folks who work really hard for long periods of time trying to make sure that we offer students the best education possible. And tonight, we'd like to recognize two of those. The first is Dr. Shelley West, who is our upcoming Assistant Principal of the Year for the 2022-23 school year. Ms. West, Dr. West, excuse me. Dr. West has about 26 years in education. She joined us in 2021 as a instructional coach. Prior to that, she'd been a math teacher. She's a nationally award certified teacher. Also, this is a prime example. We complain about a lot of lateral entry and it's a lot of trouble to get those in, but this is one of lateral entry success stories. And hope you're doing it. She entered the field after, she finished her program, and has done very well. And we'd like to congratulate her for all of the achievements and recognize her help in helping our students succeed. Dr. West?
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I was absolutely shocked, and I think that was evident in the video that Sarah took. But thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Next person I'd like to recognize is Ms. See Rushing, who is our Principal of the Year for the 2022-23 school year. There's a lot I could probably say about Ms. Rushing, but I'll leave it here to the things that... Here, she has 29 years of education, three as a principal, E.J. Hayes in Riverside Middle. I think the thing that's most noteworthy about this, when we talk about grow our own, this is a primary example. She attended school here, and she started work here, and she's still with us today. And so, we appreciate all of her efforts over all the years that she's been helping our students succeed, Ms. Rushing.
I just want to say thank you, too. It was very much a surprise, but I give the credit to my teachers. I think that they are the ones that make me look good, so... But thank you all for an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the COVID update, Dr. Monroe.
Good evening, everybody. Here, and I want members, I currently present to you the information data for Martin County Schools COVID update. You should have our handout that I created with the information, and it includes the reportable cases that we are required to report to the health department, positive cases we are required to report to the health department by our nurses. You have the entire month of September, though you had previously received the data for the first two weeks in September at your September meeting. This concludes September's reportable cases, where you see, giving you totals at each school and a total within the district. Likewise, you can also see the staff positive cases that have been reported with the total number of reportable cases by staff. I did have a conversation with Dr. Gray today with regard to Martin County's numbers. We are still in the high community spread area, but they are not recommending that we change anything that we're currently doing with regard to indoor masking or anything, because the numbers are not a true reflection of what is going on, because they do not accept reportable tests or home tests and other things that are given. And the counties that are surrounding us are included with you, too. Berkeye and Halifax both be medium, and Edgcombe, Dover and Pitt both be high spread, and none of those areas have required or gone back to require masking indoors. He did share with me that there are 32 current cases in Martin County and one case that has required hospitalization due to COVID-19. And in closing, he did share with me, and will share with you all, that there will be a drive-through flu clinic on October the 18th in the parking lot of E.J. Hayes from 6 to 4:46. They have miss, they hide those and low those for those that are required. That concludes my report of COVID for Martin County Schools.
Any questions for Dr. Monroe?
Is this E.J. Hayes alumni or E.J. Hayes school?
The alumni center, in the parking lot of the alumni.
Is there a cost to it?
No, no cost.
No cost? So, it's a free vaccination for all that shows up?
Yes. They, he said he had a miss for the children, and they had the low those for those who require low those and those who wanted high those, they would have those as well.
Any other questions?
It says here that the health department reported that there are 32 current cases of COVID-1 and one hospitalization, but we saw 38 in the schools and past 23.
That's for the month.
What?
That's for the month of September, of the reportable cases that was reported to us. So, those, his current numbers is the, what he shared with me is what he has reported today of positive cases. What you have is a snapshot of all the reportable cases that our school nurses reported for the month of September.
And your date, October 3rd, so it comes down to 32 countywide.
Yes, these were all the reportable cases. So, the cumulative cases that you are seeing in the table are what has been reported from September 1st, when we were back in school till last Friday.
And our high rating is based on September?
That's just Martin County schools. For the county, I don't know what it is for the county. This is what he reported as the positive cases that have been reported to him, which he did, again, say that it's not going to be accurate, because they do not accept reportable cases for home tests for those that test positive using home tests.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Monroe. Dr. Daley?
As we mentioned, September, across the board meeting, six of our schools were judged to be low performing, we'll go to the state board for that, the state board meets next time. Because of that, Martin County Schools have been designated as a low performing school district, which requires a number of things that we do procedurally according to the law. One of the difficulties we have at the moment is the timeframes exist for us, but the state has been very late in getting the information out. They said we only actually go to the state board until the October 6th or 7th board meeting. We're still required to finish our procedure by the time of September 5th. What we have for you laid out on page 20 and 21, and I think we brought these last time, are actually the things that need to be done between the time, between now and the time we finish the school improvement plans. It gives you the makeup of what the school improvement team has to be by law. Plans must be data-driven, using testing data, and EVAS, which is kind of difficult to do when we're just getting that, but we're digging down to find the information that we need to make it work. Required pieces of the school improvement plan, what I've proposed to Mr. Heath and think, I hope the board will accept, is that the October work session, principals will come in and give you an overview of what their school improvement team will be at that point to address any questions that you have then. They'll have another period of two weeks to go back and work with their school improvement team to finish those plans, to bring them back to you for approval at the November board meeting. That'll give us time to get things fixed if we have to, to go, excuse me, and submit them into the state on the timeframe put in place. That gives you the strategies that have to be in the plan, and what needs to happen by the approval, it's actually a secret ballot vote at the staff needs to make it work. The board does hear them and adopts the plan, but according to the law, you can only make substantive changes, suggestions during doing that, and they limit the changes that you can make. But we need to send a notice out to parents once we've got the final designation from the state school board indicating each school's status according to their ranking as either low performing or not. There are indications, law for principal placement for any principal that's been in place, and a low performing school for more than two years. At this point, we do not have a principal that fits that criteria, and this is not something that we have to deal with this year. And make, trying to make it very clear to the principals that if their school's in low performing status, next year, they put themselves in jeopardy of having, be considered for one of these options, and those options are required by law.
So, we count last year, even though it was COVID, really?
The state has chosen to count, yes, yes, ma'am, they're counting that.
Last year and this year?
Well, actually, for low performing, it could be just one year.
Okay.
Low performing is one year, continually low performing is more than one year.
Okay, okay.
And so, and yes, in that second category, the state seems to be using years, but they didn't give us any data to judge the schools, which I personally feel is unfair, but I voiced my opinion, and I'm not sure they're listening.
So, if that low performing school saw some growth through this year, that criteria still needs the principals?
Yes. If they'd been in the school for more than two years, it would have widened this year.
You don't have to have it in this school.
If they'd have been, if they'd have been placed for two years, if they had been in place for two years, just being low performing for one year makes you subject to these standards. It's a very strict, and I think punitive standard that they put for principals, but it's the one that they've adopted.
Even if they show some growth in this, this, that, that year?
The superintendent and the board have the right to take the fact they showed growth into account in choosing the option that they use.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The other licensed staff in low performing schools all have to be evaluated at the beginning of the year. Again, that's a very difficult thing to do when you don't have the data in terms of performance and growth to do that, but the principals will be working on that between now and the beginning of December, and each of the principals have to be evaluated in the same standards by now in December, so I'll be working on that and working with the principals. So, again, this gives you an outline of what needs to be concluded. I've asked Mr. Heath if we can use the October work session, if you go over that and the principals present their information, then they'll come back to you in November after they've had time to work on it some more. I'm not going to guarantee we're going to fully finish products when we come to the work session, but I think we'll have enough that you will be able to see what they intend to do and how they're planning to do it. Have you got any other questions?
So, we'll hear at next, at the next school work session?
At the work session. Yes, yes, ma'am, the work session.
Any other questions? All right, before you move forward, Ms. Manson just wanted to recognize that we can see you this week. Doug has got you set up on the screen so we can all look up there and note if you're trying to get our attention.
All right, thank you. I can see you all, too.
Great. All right, go ahead, Dr. Daley.
Sometimes technology works.
Yes, sometimes it does.
Homeless liaison. As long as I can remember, the folks in Raleigh and DPI wanted us to hire a homeless coordinator as a permanent part of the staff in Martin County Schools and all school systems, actually. It's hard to justify that, because at some points, we had as few as three students identified as being homeless, but that was back during the 2000s, and things have changed remarkably since then, particularly after the pandemic. We believe, there are a lot of students that are being mislabeled with new guidelines that could receive services, and we'd like to do a better job in finding them and delivering the services to them, but do not feel we can afford to hire another permanent person for a period of two years with federal money and then have to change that. So, Dr. Monroe has come forth with a recommendation that we've discussed, and I think makes good sense, that rather than hiring a person, we want to do a stipend with one of our social workers. The task that they want for the homeless coordinator on the state level matched the worker, the social worker. They're already working with a lot of our families. It would be a change for that social worker if we asked about the stipend, because instead of just working with the staff, with the folks in their school, they'd have to work across the county and reach out to different areas to do that. We believe that the $500 a month stipend is, at least compensate them for some of the extra duties they receive, and it's something that when the federal money runs out, I think it's possible that the board can keep that going so we're not losing services that we've just put in place.
Dr. Daley, based on what the social workers are, job qualifications already there?
I think it's more coordination services between the state and our local entity and between community resources and the school system.
Coordinating.
Coordinating, that we're not, that we're really not doing, we don't have someone to do it at the moment. And I think having, having someone in charge of that, so we appoint a one person, and that's a primary responsibility, will help us deliver the services better.
So, it will be up to the schools, the administration of schools, to report this to that social worker, or?
Whomever the social worker is, we work with the other social workers in the other schools to help identify students, and also work with community resources to do the same thing.
So, define homelessness, homeless?
Homeless at one time meant that you did not have someone to stay. If someone now moves from one, let's say they relocate from New Jersey, New York, and come down to Martin County, and for a period of time, they lived with relatives, but the definitions we had 10 or 15 years ago, that person would not be homeless, they were living with relatives and they had a place to stay. As it stands now, they're considered homeless and they're eligible for services, and I think we ought to try to coordinate to make sure that they get them. But there's a lot of folks that we traditionally have not thought of as being homeless that are, that by definition fit the category.
How many do we have?
Actually, we don't have this going on. I mean, we got, we've got 20 or 30 at the moment, Dr. Monroe?
We are, we identified five last year, and per count of new files, we have 13 that are qualified for homeless, and that's not including those five from last year. So, once we add those back into the mix, if they are still, by definition of the Center for Homelessness, it is permanent, fixed, and adequate housing. I mean, that could fall into various categories. So, if you're not having utilities, which means that you don't have adequate housing, if you're living doubled up because of economic hardship, that would qualify you as homeless, and if you are, you don't have permanent housing. So, if you're just living in a camper or campground or mobile home, some certain situation, it's a case-by-case basis that you have to use to identify homeless according to McKinney-Bento. Now, HUD has a different qualification, but for children, we use the McKinney-Bento adequate, fixed, and permanent house as our litmus test as to whether they are eligible for additional resources or services under McKinney-Bento.
Dr. Counselor, that answer was good.
Yes, but one didn't create another one. What's adequate housing?
That can be a case-by-case basis. For example, as I was using, someone that is living in a home where there's hosen floor, or if they don't have utilities going to the house, or if it's in disrepair, if it's not adequately suited for livable and in livable condition, you know, if it lets air out in the summer and the winter, I would say that was not adequate house.
So, so do, are our parents aware of this situation with homelessness?
That is one of the charges that we have been given, and I've gone to several workshops and meetings, and the consortium that we are a part of, who will now longer be a part of our consortium, was, once they got the advertising out, we had fewer, they had, they increased their numbers over three years, so now they can apply for this plot of money or a lot, allotment of money each year without Martin and Berkeye County. So, now we're charged with how will we continue to do that? One of the things is, we have to get the advertisement out, that's one of the charges that we've been given, to make people aware. And for example, I found one myself when I first got here, someone who was trying to do a school reassignment, you know, application, and she indicated that she was living with her family for whatever reason, and so I said, why did you move in? It's like, you know, it was economic hardship, well, you know, by McKinney-Bento, I don't have, you don't have to fill this out. If you're, if it's, if it suits your needs to go to a school that's closer to where you're living doubled up, then we can make that happen. And so, it required, so now we need to get the word out, because some people are running games or, you know, claiming they live in some places, and they could actually be eligible to be served under McKinney-Bento versus saying, I'm living here and knowing that they are living somewhere else, or they're living in conditions just so they can attend this school versus another school. So, this homeless liaison will definitely help with me, help me get the word out even more. I've given it to bus drivers, because they are our first line of defense. They see where kids are getting on the bus. If they're living in hotels, that's also one of those eligibility for McKinney-Bento.
Is that a state plan?
McKinney-Bento, that's a national plan, national, you know. Anywhere in the state of, in the United States, anyone who's living in fixed, not living in permanent, adequate, or fixed housing would be eligible for McKinney-Bento, and there's support, there's funds in it. We have in our federal grant each year set aside for McKinney-Bento. We don't apply singularly, Martin County does not apply singularly for McKinney-Bento funds, which is a pot of money that is given each year, but it is to provide tutoring, we can provide transportation services, and then there's also with regard to those who live in Martin County but want to go to school somewhere else, because that's where their school origin is. And we did have a case such as that, we have a family that is living in Robertsonville, and they want to continue to go to a school, their school in Rocky Mountain, because they were displaced or they were kicked out for hardship. That's, homeless liaison called me, and we tried to work together to work out the situation. They found a way to help the father by paying for, giving them a gas card, and they're trying to help him find a permanent housing, but that could always work the opposite way, too, where someone is living somewhere else but wants to continue to come to Martin County school. It is the best interest of the child to determine if we can make, keep them in their school of origin.
So, if the house is inadequate, how do we assist that? We just do report it to whatever agency needs, needs to assist?
We report the homelessness, but what we do, our charge is to remove the barriers education. We don't pay them anything or do anything for them. One of the things that we're doing, and that I share with you, is connecting the resources that we already have in Martin County to these people. And we've got people calling saying, we want to help. We've got churches calling saying, we want to help, but the bridge between the help and the need is missing.
Other questions?
Any other questions? All right, you see the proposed homeless liaison's role?
Thank you, sir.
And we need to go ahead and approve that?
I asked for approval, yes, sir.
Move to accept is very second. Look, move then seconded to accept the proposed homeless liaison as presented. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay?
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Daley, before you go, so we only going to do this for two years?
We have, we have the federal fund for two years. I said, doing it this way, I think we continue to pass that point by using Title I and other funds that are available. We have the federal fund for two years, we'll use those first, and I think, I think it's sustainable to pass that point at this price.
Okay.
All righty. Ms. Counsel, you said you would take Renee's job tonight and read that?
Yes, sir. So, we're going into closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
The Martin County Board of Education will enter closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant of the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information on G S 115C-319, and to consider matters related to additional employment of individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant of General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in the North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G, and North Carolina General Statute 115C-402. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of contracts or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in the North Carolina General Statute 143-118.1.11A5.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? Look, all in favor of going into closed session, say aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you. Close session, bring it. Closed session, bring it. Closed session, bring it.
All right.